Yes.
Nikki?
Yes.
Barney?
Yes.
Motion carried, minutes approved.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the preliminary plat approval for the Point at Greenfield.
Okay, if you take a look at your monitors here, um, this is what Mr. Welling is proposing. We have ten lots, this would be the extension of Woodstream Avenue out in Greenfield addition. Uh, ten lots, nine of them are buildable, uh, this is lot number ten. If you recall, we split this off, uh, last year or the year before for Sean Welling, uh, in order to build a house. Uh, we told him when, uh, this was later developed that include that lot in there, so it's a platted lot. So, um, let me switch over to the utility view here. Say, ten lots, um, we did have to make the cul-de-sac bigger. Um, right now they're only showing seventy feet, um, per the new fire code, they're requiring a ninety-six foot turnaround. So that's what this double red line here is showing the new cul-de-sac radius. This line out here would be the new right-of-way. Um, I did receive two calls on this, one from Jim Youst and one from Mark Syracusea. And they were just inquiring on the location, they didn't know if those, this was Dave Brown's or Welling's. So they had no objection with, with what Wellings proposed.
Now, we had reviewed these plans internally between, uh, our offices, the engineering office and the utilities office. And we had noted, uh, I think you were showing a ten-foot utility easement around the perimeter. And it's like the edge of the swale is right on the edge of that ten-foot easement. So I would recommend that we see if we could possibly get a fifteen-foot easement through there.
The drawing Andy sent me from B M U, I think it was fifty and twenty-one with Andy.
Um, I have that here, give me a second.
So we'll just have to move our sway all the way from, is it typically like very close to property like up in the?
Typically, yeah. But it seems like we've always had issues though with everything trying to get jammed in one on top of the other, so.
Yeah, I know, one time I was out there setting ends and we went to the park.
I was there.
Welling, Welling is aware of that expansion?
We, we discussed with him, yes. Yeah, Mr. Bell, you thinking that, uh, Welling would be interested in giving us a wider easement? Or he wants to squeeze everything into the ten-foot easement?
I don't think, I mean, the building set back at one thirty or thirty-five, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know why they would jack Brian.
Okay.
Yeah, and when I talked to Gary about it, he thought twenty was kind of excessive. Um, I think he can do fifteen.
Fifteen should work.
I told him that, you know, even when we go to accept the final plat, if you can get everything within that ten, then.
Right.
That would work, but.
Correct.
Whatever your utility slayer is really going to determine the easement on the final plat.
I know like on the north side where Peter's addition is, the utilities already exist on the north. So all we have to do is worry about the swale in there. And the same thing on the east side, most utilities already exist as well on the other lot. So that's not as, as big of a concern. But on the west side adjacent to the school, we don't have the luxury getting more of an easement there. So that area for sure, we would have to look at a wider area, so. But that's fine, I mean, we've had conversations with him, I don't have a problem, uh, waiting until final plat approval to see where the utilities fall. Just so it's on record that we've discussed it and recommend a wider one.
One, one thing I'd like to point out, Brian, is I emailed you earlier about EPA starting to require closing construction of the MPs.
Right.
I, I asked him specifically about this and he said, well, we, we think you can do bio-retention in the terrace.
Wow.
I'm like, okay, I want to let that in my front yard.
Right.
So we are going to have to do something in those, um, cathode-based filters. Those meet eighty percent coal suspension salary level, they do some, uh, hypercarbons too. Problem is, is once they're in, the city's issue.
Right, to maintain.
You got to take them out and clean their filter bag on occasion, so.
Right.
And that's the downfall to that, but other than, the, the grass, the grass swales have to be set, they're going to be long to, to do the eighty percent T S S removal. So you're going to start seeing that all your subdivision. Last, last year in EPA, anybody who went to, uh, house gave them a noticement tent, could have started more than an acre. They came and visited every site, raised heaven and left. But they're going to be, I think you're going to see them more and more, um, these construction sites, so.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any comments? Their questions?
Is there any way to get an easement from the school property over to Markey for a walkway?
We, we discussed this a year ago, two years ago with the school. And they didn't seem to have much interest in wanting to do that. It seemed like their internal traffic patterns and pedestrian patterns, they did not want to facilitate coming through this way, so.
Kids are going to be walking through.
Well, I understand that, but the school had said that that, the pedestrian walkway does not suit their needs in that particular area. So, um, based on their traffic studies and pedestrian studies that they had done, they didn't feel a need for it, so. Cause we had discussed that specifically at the meeting for the lot split for Sean Welling for the house there as well, about putting an easement through there. And we had conversations with the, uh, school's designers at that point in time as well. And, um, they did not seem real interested in doing that. Now, I know Andy and utility's office, we did kind of do a cursory review on the basic plans that we had and didn't find any major issues. I know one, one concern we always have on cul-de-sacs, we talked about was, um, you know, snow removal. And fortunately since the cul-de-sac is getting bigger, um, it won't be as bad. But we'll probably want to see at some point in time with the final design roughly where the driveways might go. Just to make sure we get enough room for mailboxes, water meter pits and all the standard. I mean, you'll, you'll cross that same problem, Danny, but that's one thing we'll address in the final design.
As we made you call us that bigger, I think we got sixty feet.
Right.
At court distance between the lots, so that should be plenty to get driveways and utilities.
Perfect, perfect.
And you're good with all the easements BMU's proposing on screen there?
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Uh, utilities office, do you have any other concerns other than the easements there per se?
We, we spoke about easements on the outside, but we also just wanted to, and I know this is preliminary, but we'd also like to, some of the easements shown on the inside of there, uh, we have to loop that electric around, it's not going to run externally all the way around. So I don't care to mention that, you know, you didn't like some of those easements. But some of them have sewers on main, but we can split that with the, you know, just like a streetlight feed or whatever, but.
Right.
And we can work with those a little bit, if it's under and a half to five, as long as we can, we can share that easement with the sewer.
Right.
But as long as we can get that known before the final plat, I'd love to see some.
Okay.
Good, and that as far as I'm concerned from engineering office, I'm, I'm content with everything.
Is there anyone in the audience that has comments or questions regarding, can you come to the podium and state your name?
My name is Jack Fortney. I know this is preliminary, a couple of questions. We own the property that is on the southeast corner there along Shady Lane. They did excavation on our property, I know it's in the easement area, uh, for the Welling home. Is there going to be additional, would there be additional work through our property for additional facilities for the rest of the, uh, development?
You're, you're the first house south of?
Yeah, right where the cursor is.
Right here. Uh, other than maybe a utility tie-in, I don't see, or some ditch drainage, no, there's nothing on your property as far as I can see.
Okay.
Which the water storm, the San area was extended when Sean's was built.
Those are already through his driveway, so.
So and it's all the way past your property, right?
Right, right.
So you, you should be good.
Okay. The other question, um, and it's, again, I know this is preliminary, but the lot one and two area, we've been there for ten years. And that area always has standing water, always has in that area, is that?
The city had addressed some of that a couple of years ago, I think it was.
Right.
Your last year, the year before, we had an extra storm basin. And one thing we talked about was there was a large topsoil pile that was there. We had asked Gary at that point in time if it was possible to move it over. And he said, well, I'm in the design phase right now of taking care of this. So, uh, Mr. Bell's plans have taken into consideration with putting in a rear yard swale to help pick that up. And obviously the houses will be built higher, which would help alleviate that, so.
I know, I know the home directly to the, it'd be to the east of lot one.
Right, Syracuse's and the other one.
Lost their basement because of.
During drainage?
No, no. While they had lived there.
Wow.
Well, there used to be a fair amount of water that came from the school property.
Correct, right.
They, they just picked up that and their site design later was made.
Correct, correct, they did. But yeah, I, I feel comfortable with the additional drainage and the swales that are going on. It should pick up.
Okay.
Majority of it and get it out of there.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Is there anyone else that had comments or concerns?
Call for motion.
Call, uh, call for motion to approve this request?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for this particular item. Basically, the additional comment will be, uh, to include the additional easements as requested by the utilities office and verified through the final plat.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion on the floor to approve the preliminary plat with additional easements, uh, as discussed and verified on the final plat. Brian?
Yep.
Mayor?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Nikki?
Yes.
Barney?
Yes.
Motion carried, preliminary plat approved.
Okay, the third item on our agenda is the use variance for, for a storage building in the R2 districts, um, brought forth by the Wellings kind of coming across at two twenty-eight North Beach Street.
Okay. If you look at the screen, uh, commissioners own this lot. Um, currently there is a garage that sits back here in the corner. What they are proposing or requesting is a use variance, they want to get rid of that garage and build a twenty-four by fifty storage building. Access to the building would be off the alley. Reason for this building is for the storage of mowers for the courthouse, correct, Mr. Bell? Um, as you can see, it's going to be roughly eighty-two feet off the right-of-way. There is no proposal work up here, right, Danny?
I think we're doing some storm drainage out there.
Okay. Um, I do have some elevation views. Uh, wood frame construction, vinyl sided, correct? So closing two doors facing the alley, one entry door. Uh, the west side will just be vinyl wall, looks like we got one window on the south side. Floor plan. One big open space, there will have to be a restroom in here, but we'll worry about that with the state plans. Um, did receive several calls on this. Lois, and I can't remember her last name, but I looked that up, it was at three ten North Beach Street. Um, I talked to her this morning, she was initially opposed to this. After talking to her on the phone, um, and finding out who it was for and what it was for, um, she was okay. She was up near the impression that, you know, somebody's just going to throw a barn that lived out of town here and store stuff there. After explaining this for the commissioners for, um, lawnmowers and whatnot, the courthouse, she, she didn't seem too opposed to it. Uh, the other call I received, she is actually present at the meeting, so I'll let her speak her piece here after I'm done. Scott Leroux was initially opposed to this building. Um, after several meetings with him and going over drawings, um, he noted that, you know, there could be a house built in front of this someday. And it could essentially be residential use again if the commissioners ever sell it, so. He, he doesn't seem to oppose. He said he was going to get me a letter for today's meeting, I never seen anything, so I'm assuming he's good with it now, but. Um, at that time, I'll turn it over to you guys if you guys got anything, and then we'll let the public speak.
Andy, what's on the two lots next to, on either side of this?
Uh, both of them are residential.
So single family homes?
Yes.
Would they build it or the jail isn't off there, or didn't they think about it then before they sold it?
Yeah, they, they talked about it before they sold it, they, since they owned this property, they really wanted to just move detached from the jail property. I think that part was only saying, saying.
Uh, actually, I believe that was personal.
Was there any, ever, ever anything on that lot before, up in front of it?
I'm sure there was a house.
A house?
Yeah, it's a long, it's a long time ago.
Not that I'm aware of here, but I, I did not research that.
What is the zoning on that for sure?
R2.
R2, that's conditional.
So yes, they're asking for a use variance to be able to build this storage building.
Um, is there anyone from the public that's here that has comments? We'll just ask that you come one at a time and state your name, where you live.
My name is Demetra Porter, and I live at two twenty-two North Beach, which is right next to where this building is proposed. I, along with signatures, which I will be happy to distribute to you folks, uh, below agree that we do not want that building there. What we would prefer to see on that piece of property would be a home. There was a home there, it burnt, it's been many years ago, but it was a residence. And there's no doubt that putting that building where you're proposing, where you're proposing to put it, other than a private residence at the two twenty-eight Beach Street, is going to drive down the values of the homes that are around it. Uh, it will also bring additional traffic. It'll bring possibly undesirable people to our little community that we've got going there. The amount of the police coverage would have to be increased to protect that building. Because everyone knows if you have a building that has something of value in it, and it's, there's no one there twenty-four seven, with the problems that we're having with drugs in our area, they're going to find some way of getting into that building. And if they get into it, then the next thing they're going to think about, well, it was easy getting in there, let's try the homes. So we're very, very concerned about that, we're concerned about the noise. And we pretty much can kiss our peaceful living goodbye. Our residents in our community have put a lot of money into their property. I've only been here not quite two years. I moved, well, not quite two years. I, I moved into my home in September of two thousand and thirteen. Since then, I've already put ten thousand dollars into that house, trying to bring it back to its originality. Because that home, although it's not located in the historical district, is one of the oldest homes that you have here in Bryan. And it's a shame to take away the value from it when you have someone that came here that wants to bring that back and make it a proud possession of our community. Right now, we have seven commercial buildings right in our little area. We have Lockhart Construction that bought the old sheriff's building. And we have yet to know what he's going to do with that building, other than the residents, he's fixing it up so that he can rent that out. We have the parking lot where people gather, they test their driving, you know, they do things of that nature. We have the old building, uh, center that now belongs to Spanglers, along with the lot that reaches out all the way to the street. We have the Andres O'Neil Lowes Insurance Building, we have Expression Salon, we, not to mention Oberlin Turnbull Funeral Home that is also a very, very large facility with a very, very large parking space. Uh, Spanglers has the intent of expanding their building out to the corner of, uh, North Beach and Mulberry. Then they're going to put a parking lot behind the, uh, behind this young lady's home. And it's going to reach, so we understand, from Mulberry all the way back over to High Street. Or to, to where the home's set on High Street. We also have a commercial building right now that is being used by some of our, our churches to, to build beds for the people that can't afford things like that, I've worked with them and they're marvelous. The residents, the residents in this area work continually and pour money into their properties to increase the value of their homes. These proposed plans will rob them not only of the money that they've already put in, but any that they, that they decide to put in later. Because the value of the homes are going to go down. There isn't anyone in this room or anyone anywhere that's going to want to buy a home in the middle of a commercial area. Now, you're, we're not going to get out of our homes, what we paid for them, we'll never get out of our homes, the money that we put in them. And quite frankly, I'm sorry, I don't mean to sound selfish, because I'm really not. I'm here trying to speak for my neighbors, because a lot of them weren't, they weren't able to be here. And I'm very fond of my neighbors. And I love my home. But what's being planned here simply, it's not right, it's not fair. You think about it for a moment, our tax dollars are going to pay to clear that piece of property so that they can put that building there. Our tax dollars are going to pay for that building, and we're going to lose what we've invested in our homes. But there has to be, I'm not really all that familiar with Bryan yet. But there has to be someone, somewhere here in Bryan, that a building such as this can be placed where it doesn't take the value of homes away. There has to be some place where the property is vacant, where the property doesn't butt up against homes. But, and this is my own personal thinking, please don't hold my neighbors to this. But it's a terrible thing to think that if we continue to do this type of activity, our beautiful city of Bryan is going to be nothing but commercial land. It's going to be ninety-nine percent commercial, one percent residential. The city loses their tax dollars, county loses their tax dollars, states loses their tax dollars, and we lose our homes. Now, it's, it'd be such a waste to put such a beautiful city in a position like that. And we ask you, please, not, not to approve this. Please continue to let us have our peace. And I have a little packet here that I made up with signatures, with letters, um, some of the residents, I couldn't run down a couple of them as hard as I tried. They, uh, they want people, want people to reach them. I'm sorry, I only made my own share.
Thank you.
I apologize for that.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
But yes, while I'm doing more than anything else, is begging you, please don't do this. Don't let them do this to our community.
Thank you, is there anyone else from the audience that has comments? Board having comments, questions?
One question, there's already a building on that lot right now, right?
Correct.
An old garage, do they use that now for storage?
Yes.
For the lawnmowers?
Yes.
So all you want to do is tear that old garage down and put up a new garage? That's roughly twice the size of what's there now. If there was a house, and I'm asking this question, a residential house out front right now on Long Beach Street, and they wanted to put a garage back there, would they have to come get a variance to do that?
Not for a resident?
Not for a resident?
No, but for a commercial, like this. Right.
But it, it's not any bigger than a residential garage?
No.
Right?
Well, fifty's pretty big. Twenty by thirty's probably a normal garage, this is twenty-four by.
It's a pretty good size, there's a, it'd have to meet, can't be bigger than the floor area of the house, so, as long as the house was that big.
Yeah, they could.
But if the house was that big, could you cover that much land?
Yeah, it's a.
House that size, the garage, that size?
Probably.
That'd be close.
Um, one thing I didn't note, um, you all should have received an email, uh, from, uh, the Ridgeways, stating their proposal, they're opposed to this project as well. Which I'm assuming they're on your list.
They signed the petition that was given to us here.
Paul?
Victoria signed it.
Victoria and Barbara?
Yeah, Victoria signed it.
Okay.
Okay, can I call for a motion to approve this variance request? Or deny this variance request?
I move with the number of people that we have signatures opposing it, I will oppose, I'll make a motion that we deny the request this time.
I'll second the motion. I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion on the floor to deny the use variance request. Mayor?
Yes.
Barney?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Brian?
No.
Nikki?
Yes.
Motion carried, request denied.
And the last item on our agenda for today is the use variance for the duplex in the R1 district. From Nadine, is it Light House? Okay, I'm sorry. At 927 South Walnut Street, Nadine?
Okay. I'm going to give you a brief overview, and then I'll let Nadine go ahead and address you here. Let me get this situated the way I want it first. Okay. Look at the drawing here. 927 would be the corner lot here, corner of Walnut and South Street. Years ago, there was a house here, it was in pretty sad shape, and we tore it down. Now, the owner is requesting a use variance to be able to build a duplex in an R1 district. Her plan is to live in one half of it and run out the other. This time, Nadine, do you have any additional information to add?
I just wanted to say that, yes, I do want to live in it, so I'm going to make it a home. But I would like a little income to help pay for this house. I know it says that I have to have some kind of hardship, well, I have, I put my granddaughter through college, two-year college. She just graduated in the summer, so that gives a lot of my savings. I've also raised her without much help from either of her parents. And we also have, and I was glad to do that, but I just use a lot of my savings. We also, we have a house in Hicksville, and I could sell it, but I'm letting, there's a handicapped man that lives in it. He's very, very nice. Everybody in Hicksville likes his noise, because his handicap makes him want to be providing this video, this stupid thing. He pays most of the utilities, he tries to pay them off anyway, I'm letting him, so that's where some of my money is. And then my house that I live in now, it's just way big with three boys, and they're all gone, they don't live in the area. So, they don't, you know, I just don't need that much house for them. But I would really like to build a nice, a nice, not, I don't want to present myself as a nobody, but I want to build a nice, nice home.
No, the R2's not Perry, I think.
Does anyone have any questions?
Andy, where does the R2 district stop? Does it stop at Perry Street?
Yes.
And it's zoned R1 across the street as well?
Yes.
But commercial to the west?
Correct.
I drove down through there last week, and I couldn't find too many other duplexes or multifamily units down in that area that was south of Perry. I mean, which would make sense because it's zoned R1, but didn't see many that it had existed.
Closest one that I know of would be, seems like there's an apartment here on Main Street. Seems like there's a duplex or a five block there.
I think you're right, sir. I think you're right.
There's one on Cherry and Hamilton.
Cherry and Hamilton, yep.
And if I rented it to somebody, they would have to pass the same screening that I have to pass whenever I go, you know, whenever anybody wants to. You know, they'll probably need to know whatever, and I'm sure they have that screening with you sending the federal government. I would really regret it, because I'm living there.
Does anyone else from the public have comments or questions?
Did we get any comments?
I only received one call, and she was not opposed. She was just wondering what it was, so.
I know, because this is Cooley's, she might have it there.
If you do build, you were planning on coming out on South Street with your driveways, correct? Which, the only thing I know that's on that corner is the Little Caesars, they send my park there all the time, so.
They usually park right in the street, I know.
Well, yeah.
Block that lot.
They wouldn't want that a lot.
I've seen, that's what they do.
I know they've upset the Cooleys a few times.
East South Street.
Might get some grand funds.
Can read, reach out your window, I'll buy a pizza.
They might deliver.
Yep.
Okay, a call for a motion to approve this request or deny this request?
I'll make a motion, will you grant the variance?
I'll second. Motion on the floor to grant the use variance. Barney?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Brian?
Yep.
Nikki?
Yes.
Motion carried, use variance approved.
How do I get a house to put away?
Come see me.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Okay.
He's the man.
Get your plans around, come see me.
I know where you are.
Okay, I'll make a motion for adjournment?
Hang on, Nikki.
First day, it's all right.
Would like to set up a meeting sometime to discuss code revision changes.
Yeah, we've got several, we've got several issues. We've talked about making some revisions to the sign rules for quite some time, and then obviously there were changes in the fire code that contradict what we have, which was apparent on the subdivision that we were looking at as well, so we'd just like to get together and talk about getting our rules back in, you know, in line with what is actually happening in some other rules. So, if you guys want to look at your calendar and maybe even pick the first Monday of next month or something, we could just have a-
If we have anything on the agenda, if it's a light agenda, we'll just meet afterwards, or if we don't have anything, I'll set up a meeting and just meet and discuss, so. Jot down anything that's, you want to see changed in the code and talk about it.
Sounds good.
As of right now, I don't have anything for next month, so.
But with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. I feel like I should second that motion. I'm sorry, did you have a question?
I have one question, but I'd simply like to say thank you for your question. I'd also like to say-
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
There's a motion to second.
Oh, he is.
You second or?
I second, it doesn't matter.
Brian?
Yep.
Nikki?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Barney?
Yes.
Motion carried, meeting adjourned.